Okay, we're going to open up this meeting at 7:45. Have a bid opening. And at this point, we're going to dispense with formalities. That'll happen at 8:00. When we have our regular township trustee meeting. So at this point, John, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, guys, for all coming this morning. Appreciate it. We have so, this is for the King Bridge. One, two, three, four, five, six bids. I'll stick, um, this is this?
This is 12.
Hey, the first bid is, um, John. Ohio, $439,594. $439,594. Uh, the next one is Carver.
Same there.
Carver, A, B, R. Carver's bid is $388,000 even. $388,000, 000, 00. Uh, Barbados. Uh, Barbados Construction Company, $352,340. $352,340, 00. There, guys, welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, damn it!
One, two, three, four.
I do have, I hear you. My God, I better turn him on. Turn on.
There. $287,000, 80250. $287,802, 50.
Okay.
Hey, the last one is Carver. Cardinal Passfall, $290,20450. $290,000, 20450. And the meeting, we need to call you just, uh... John, uh, $439,594. Carver, $388,000 even. Barbados, $352,000, 340. Aaron was $287, 80250. Ryan Actin, $385,97250. And Carver was $290,20450.
So at this time then, when you motion to accept these bids?
Yes.
For referral to be... Don't get by that. Can you adjourn office?
Yeah, I'll make that. Nick, can you make the motion and I'll second it?
Yeah, I'll commit the motion.
All those with payers?
Aye.
Two?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll get these over today in our day, we'll take them to the engineer's office. And then hopefully by two weeks from now?
Yeah, shit out of it.
So we're going to take the lowest reasonable offer that meets all the requirements of the job. All right?
Yep, thank you, okay.
And thanks, everybody. Do you want to adjourn the bid opening?
Sue?
I'll make the motion.
All those with payers, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Adjourn at 7:51 on our special meeting.
Okay.
I don't like.
Okay. Yeah, he's got a tip.
Okay. Now...
......
Thank you, please, your name, Dan. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank the Lord for the beautiful days we have. And we know Lord will help us. We just pray that at this township meeting that you would be here to give us the right words to say that the business could be conducted in the way for the benefit to the rest and that we may use good knowledge and good wisdom to serve you. We ask this nine eight even.
Good morning, everybody. Okay, we're going to move right along. I have two announcements or minds courses that I would like to share with you all. And first of all, Diane Smith of Record Courier called me yesterday and had a number of questions regarding the jet. So I told her what I knew and then I referred her to John since Mike Cincini is not available. And what she wants to do, they do have a photographer with the newspaper now, and they would like to come into very closely, they could help the pictures and do a story for us. So I wanted to share that with everybody, so she'll probably give me a call. And then I had her, I, you know, I was out and about and ran into one of our residents. And she's concerned that it's on 18 when you go west towards townage. When you come to the little road that goes to Magador, make that left-hand turn and go in the back way to Magador, that there, the lines need to be bright or white because they're wearing off. And being as she's in her 80s, she was concerned because when she goes to make that left-hand turn, the white line isn't there to kind of guide her at that, that, you know, you normally don't go up a ramp. You normally don't go up an exit ramp to get to another road. So she was concerned about that.
And you were the accident one?
I passed on the count.
And I explained to her that that was a state road and that she didn't want to call it. Yeah, 118 and... So anyway, she was happy. So I told her I would explain that and show you all about it today. And that is my announcements, of course. Bynes, Nick, you have any?
Nothing today.
Okay. And going over that, we have a meeting against Denise Smith. And I met Denise many years ago when she was attorney and over in prosecutor's office. So she's got some good words for us.
Thank you. Yes, I am Denise Smith. I am chair of the Portage County Board of Elections. And as a member of the board, we, as a board, we've decided to go to each of the township trustee meetings to just leave you some information about the special election office. Essentially, because you're the ones talking to your community more than we are, especially when you see them every day. That way you can give them as much accurate information as you can. And I've provided you a copy of some of that information. The thing I gave you is a couple records, so if you wanted to pass that on before your office. The first thing is that obviously there is a special election on August 8. All of the precincts in Portage County will be activated. There is a single issue on the ballot, no candidates, no other levies, just one issue. That issue is the proposed constitutional amendment that was proposed by the legislature. It would change three things in the Constitution. First, it would change how a constitutional amendment is passed, to be placed on the, in the Constitution. That is, instead of a simple majority, which it is right now, 30 percent plus one, it would take 60 percent of the vote to change, adopt that constitutional amendment. The second thing it would change was the number of signatures or the type of signatures. As you stand as right now, you get a certain percentage of signatures in every county. And you must have that percentage of signatures in 44 of the ADA counties. If this resolution, or this issue passes by voting yes, you will need those records and signatures and all being made. So one county does not provide that threshold, that means that ballot issue is not going to get on ballot to the voter count. And the final thing is the cure period. As you know, if you've all run for office, you have to have so many signatures on petition and it must be valid before the elections checks them to make sure the registered voters can actually get the signatures on file. If, if you are determined not to have a sufficient number of signatures on your petition, there's an appeal if you were. You can ask the board here over here, and you could bring John Doe or Jane Doe in to testify, "Yes, that's really my signature. I've had some illnesses, I'm now 90 years old, I don't sign things as well as I used to be." So then you verify that. That same type of cure period or table period may not be permitted in a proposed constitutional amendment. If they're voting yes, would pass the issue. Voting no would obviously defeat the, this issue. The other thing is, please know, let people know, there are three ways to vote. One of them is on election day. It's held, which is the age of us. Second, the age of people. The second is an absentee ballot application. There is an application that you can call the Board of Elections or get it online, complete the application, mail it in, bring it into the Board of Elections or put it in the dropbox there at the Board of Elections, and then you will be sent to your ballot. It has to be on the form prescribed, it can't be on an app, it can't be on any other form. It must be on that form for it to be valid, and you will be mailed to your ballot. The last day's request, an absentee ballot is in August 1st by 8:30 p.m. And then the last day, you should get your ballot and vote it to submit that ballot back to the Board of Elections is the day before the election, obviously. It must be in the dropbox by that day or postpartum, obviously. The second way to vote is early voting, that means you're going to the Board of Elections as of yesterday, you can vote in. The hours are in that packet, the room is open, and you can go in and bring your photo ID and vote. You do need the ID when you go to vote, whether it's in person or on election day. Those IDs are valid, Ohio driver's license, must be an Ohio license, an Ohio State ID card, military ID card, or your passport. Those are what you have to have. You're filling out the absentee mail ballot request. That form requires you have a copy of your driver's license, the last four digits of your social security number, or the registration of your driver's license. Okay, those are the three ways to vote. And then finally, we are the university of election officials. We did expect an August election, people on vacation, things like that. So there, call for elections, the numbers there in the packet, it's 9735000, to set up if you want training. Training takes about two and a half hours, you can pay $20 for the training. And then election day, work all day election day, it's $130. And again, you're running both gentleman's rights and your public rights, which are ready to be in two at the Board of Elections. Whether you're going on an empty drop box, whether you're validating signatures, whatever you're doing, it's one day, one of all of the public, each of those tasks. So again, you're needed poll workers, any elected, electorate in the state of Ohio, registered voter, in Portage County, could be a poll worker in Portage County. Also, 17 and older, 17 and 18 year olds, high school students, county poll workers. It's part of a community service, credits they need for graduation, so to a certain amount, that's also applicable. They do have to take a training, they also would need...
I have a question.
Yes?
Many times when an issue comes up, one of, to be voted on, there's other little things attached to it. And I just wondered, this is just definitely a yes or no vote on this. Is there other wordage or other, other little pigtails things put on this that this would affect?
Well, the sample ballot is also in that packet. So that's exactly what you're going to see on ballot. It gives you three things that would, that would differ, that would be on the Constitution. It gives a section of the Constitution that's, that's what we want to vote.
This is what it's going to be about, but what's going to be off the ballot that affects it by this vote? That's what I'm concerned with. I've, I've talked to a couple of representatives about, I've got two, and I don't know which way I'm going to go on this vote.
And I'm not here to give you that thing.
Right, but I am going to vote. But I understand that there's some language that goes along with this that affects abortion and it affects the children in school, and I'm sure that's all been tossed around.
There's lots of information out there. There's a lot of postcards, there's a lot of newspaper articles, there's lots of other things, but what you're actually voting on is still that's on...
So then I'm responsible to see just exactly what I'm voting for. So I would just suggest everybody really look into the computer, study this out and see what's...
Yeah, I mean, the sample ballot, if you go to the Board of Elections website, it's on there.
Come back.
I know you have your certain age for your voting. Or if you're a senior, that's about, that's what you're voting.
Okay, thank you. I'll just, I keep on, I got a few days left to vote after vote, so I'll just keep on checking to make sure my yes or no is going to be yes or no.
That's all, that's it. Yes, it passes, no, it doesn't.
For the poll workers, are you looking, are you need physical people or are you looking for alternates? Because I know in the past there was a call for poll workers and some of the feedback I got was, well, they really said they needed poll workers, went through the training, and then I was told, "Oh, you're going to be an alternate, we'll call you, we need you." And that's, that's difficult for some people who may take the day off to do it, but they're not going to take a day off just to sit for that meeting.
At this point, I usually do alternates when they have enough poll workers on, and that's just for people who call off, something happens at that point. In this case, it's my understanding, they have, you know, again, again, they have the D and all.
Right.
The number of polling places, we reduced the number of cases that can hold in place to allow, to help us. But it's my understanding that they're writing out here, the D would probably be an alternative to this one, but they do need some, obviously.
Okay. Yeah, just, I just want to clarify as I talk to people, it's, I know some people have tried to volunteer in the past before, and they're like, "Well, I want to train again."
It always, yeah, it always hits the head with this.
Yeah.
It's making people that have done a long time. In my opinion, just taking the training to, to get just, to me, these days, the only thing I will do, everybody has certain suspect ideas about our elections, we think that Portage Counties are trying to stem or validate, but the best way to learn about it is to go to the Board of Elections, watch the audit project and the accuracy testing, it's a population, do the poll work training, see exactly what happens off the ballot, what's coming, what's going to happen, and you know, responding on them, I think that's the best way to feel assured about our elections.
Well, thank you for your time, thank you for the information.
Okay, let's continue, continue with the, I need a motion for the minutes, if you've all seen those.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the bid opening for June 28th, the second bid opening for June 28th, the regular Board of Trustee meeting.
I'll second that.
All those with payers, Sue?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have any additions to the agenda?
Yeah, I need to add an executive session under fire.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda and then we go into discussion.
I'll second the motion.
And now discussions. I'd add, add an executive session for employment under fire.
I would just put it under executive session. Yeah. Yeah, executive session one.
Any other changes to the agenda?
Uh, I need to put underneath, I need to put under Road Department... the resignation letter.
I would like to make a motion that we accept. Oh, we need another motion?
No.
You just need to roll call to accept.
I'll roll call.
All those favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Purchase orders, we need to acknowledge those.
Make a motion to acknowledge purchase orders.
Second.
All those favor, suit?
Yes.
Yes.
And I move that we accept a motion for the review of warrants.
I'll second that.
All those favor, suit?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is the best time in the meeting right now. We have comments and questions. Do we have any from our residents and intended? Okay, here we go. Before you talk, we ask that you give your name and your address if you want to address the board. Also, I want to say that any comments that we get, we try to limit it to five minutes. If what your issue is is going to require more than that, we ask that you call the office and be put on the agenda. That way you can have like fifteen minutes to pre-set your response. Okay, yeah. We have this gentleman here. Didn't have a lot of time. We forget to move him up and down.
No, no, that guy left. He just wanted to know about that.
Oh, he looks like you. Okay. You have comments? All right, let's go ahead then into our regular meeting and go police department.
Thanks. So I just have a couple of informational items for the board. Our kindergarten safety school program is taking place starting Wednesday, August second, and Friday, August fourth, for the three day period there. It'll be once again at Victory Bath and Simple. As of a couple of days ago, we have forty-five incoming kindergartners enrolled in the program. We can take up to sixty as a cap. So that's still open for some additional registrants to get that up to the sixty. But as of a couple of days ago, we're up to forty-five for our program. Been a feedback with the Coma with the Cop event we did last Saturday. Weather kind of got in. Weather came in kind of halfway through that, so we kind of cut that short. But I wanted to send my thanks to Joe Fallon and Franks for partnering with us with the Coma with the Cop event last Saturday. And the last items again, informational item, we do have a retirement celebration taking place this Thursday for Officer Steve Gilker, thirty years of service. His celebration gathering is going to be at Sunny Hills Golf Course Clubhouse from four P. M. to seven P. M. And that's all I have for you this morning.
Ryan, is there a deadline for the kid enrollment?
There is not a specific deadline. What I'm probably going to do is by the end of the week today, I'll probably put another posting on social media. I'll just reach out. So if there's an incoming kindergarten parent in the field district, give them the contact information and reach out to them. So no hard deadline as of today, but probably realistically, maybe another week to two at the most.
Okay, just because when I do the video recap, that way I kind of put that in there.
That'd be reasonable. Yeah.
Appreciate that. And then the only other question I had was, any updates on cruisers? And I kind of talked about that as work.
Yeah, the update is no update. We've been reaching out to Derek at Montrose Ford, and we've been on the waiting list for them for several months, as have several others. So I do not have an update on that. We've been periodically reaching out to them. We had heard some VIN numbers have been created, but we've not got any feedback yet. I know Chief Wallace and Ravenna are on the same waiting list as us as well. So right now, I don't have an update on that piece. But as soon as I do, I'll become an E. V. in the board.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, anything, any more comments from the police department? Okay, here none. Let's go get the fire department.
Okay, thank you for, you see the calls for service there. We're all just, I'll be on again. I was on vacation for last week, or a few days here and there. So I'm back now. Chief's interviews with the top candidates of the new entry level firemen has come to a conclusion. And that's what we'll talk about in the executive session coming up. Chase vehicle incident, if you didn't hear, our vehicle kind of got used by a non-resident. Stolen, if you meant. It is recovered. I'm working with insurance to assess the damage. John, they have not called me yet. So it's still waiting.
Did you see, you know, you signed?
Yeah, exactly. I called back.
Yeah, they haven't called.
Okay, because it's been a little bit now. And then the only other thing is station bill continues. You'll see a lot in the interior if you end up going through into your cabinets, bathroom tile, others, et cetera, on the inside. So things are still moving on with that. And that's all I have.
At this point then, let's take a look at the agenda.
All right, we have, we don't have any old business stuff. You have a new business that is the bid results for the library property. There was one bid, it was R two K contract. They actually went through a little group from Charles Porter and valued those recommendations that we do accept the bid from R two K. Contracting, Rob is actually here today, he's in the back. The problem's there, the bid's going to be a hundred fifty-four, four thirty-seven is what we're paying for the rehab of all that. Did speak with Rob the other day. We're hoping that the eight weeks that he's looked at feel well. We just credit I have that bad experience with the building timeline lately.
Right.
So we need to pass our resolution to accept no air.
So I'll make a motion before I make the motion. John, do we need to do that on the ARPA form?
Yes, we do. Actually, I expect about there at least. Yes, it needs to be our own.
So if you have that.
Would you like to explain more or less just what the ARPA form is and what people provide?
Yeah, so we have federal funding from the ARPA fund. The ARPA fund was issued during the COVID season. Those dollars cannot be used for payroll. They can only be used on projects inside the township. And we have a deadline to use those ARPA funds by. We don't utilize the ARPA funds by the end of twenty twenty-four. Those ARPA funds then go back to a pool in the county, and everybody who used all their ARPA funds gets to draw out of that pool. Who didn't use their ARPA funds don't get to draw from the remainder pool. So this is a way for us to afford these projects without using local tax dollars. It's going to be that federal tax dollars that came there. So I'd like to make a resolution by Brumfield Township that the township has received a distribution of monies known as the ARPA funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, whereas Congress passed the act effective March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and whereas Section six oh three created the Coronavirus Local Recovery Fund, which among other things appropriated money to cities not entitlement units of local government and counties to mitigate the fiscal effects stemming from the public health emergency we respect for coronavirus disease. This funding will be used for the library renovation project at a cost of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. I need a second for discussion on that.
Second for discussion.
So are you going to be ready, are you ready to go now, right?
Well, I need to say my. Okay, Robert Swager for Iowa, seven nine ten brothers. I believe that the blueprints need to be submitted to the county for review.
Okay.
So some demolition could take place. But as far as rebuilding until we get that permit, should it happen?
Okay, and I was just asking, because we have a project. I have a local community outreach group that's going to be there Friday evening and Saturday morning this week to get all the debris that's in there, like the leftover toys and books and stuff, so that you can start your project. I was just looking for like a soft deadline and when you want to be able to get into the building. Is Monday, are you looking as soon as Monday or are you looking?
Yeah, we could. But then there would be a wall in time because the building department has thirty days to review the drawings. And then if there are any revisions that need to be resubmitted.
So if we ran past Monday, getting that cleaned out, for some reason, we don't get it all done this weekend, that's not going to affect you at all?
So I guess, I guess what I'm thinking is the notice you're receiving should be when I have, and I may want to comment on it.
Okay. And then I would say now that we have Holly on board as the business manager, let's just coordinate everything through Holly. So we're going to make that transition to Holly sitting up here. She would be your point of contact moving forward. And we're going to transition Charles away from the board and John and over to Holly too, so that we just have a single point of contact.
So we have a. We have a motion in a second to.
All those favor, suit?
Yes.
Next.
Yes.
Yes, do you have?
For the library? Um, it's in Hurson's office, I believe, but there is a door code also.
Oh, is there?
Yeah.
Can you get that to Rob?
At this point, let's move along to zoning and economic.
Under admin, I just got some question.
Oh, okay.
Nothing that we need to go on, something that'd be on the agenda. John, as we move forward, who's handling agendas and documents for the?
Howard's County. From Lauren, thank you, Lauren, for spelling it out. She's going to, they're going to go to Howard.
Okay, just, because I just want to make sure, because I knew during the law, there was some confusion there. But we're not getting all the files uploaded to.
You have access to Dropbox now, but it'll give you that, so she.
Okay, yeah, we just need to make sure she knows where the trustee meeting files is, because I couldn't find those.
You need to make sure. Yes, you have.
And then, and then the other thing was, do we have any updates on the pending suit? So we ever heard anything on the case or the insurance case?
Which insurance?
The health insurance.
Oh, no, no, the health insurance is in the Supreme Court.
Okay.
So we've got.
So it's just sitting there at the Supreme Court then?
Well, they may get through their first level and they could dismiss it if they were, if it was considered anything they want to look at. If they didn't get dismissed, so that's why I'm next to you.
Okay.
So I don't know what their goddamn schedule are, what that's all about. But at this point, it's still at the Supreme.
Okay, all right, yeah, I was just trying to figure, because I talked to the auditor's office two weeks ago, and they can't even do our audit now until they figure this out.
I don't think they want to do our audit. I know they want to.
Well, they said they can't.
I think they're, even if they got a group that did their consent, it's not smart videos.
Okay.
That's all right. We had something else for a long time before they came in.
Okay.
So I did talk to Steve a couple of weeks ago last night. So the proudest thing, I don't know. I haven't heard anything since then. I thought it.
Well, I know there was an ask for continuation by our board, because we were in the selection of an attorney. But that's the last I heard.
I haven't heard anything.
Is, where did you have me right again?
Reddiss.
Reddiss, okay.
Well, since my thunder got stolen, and we're talking about Holly, I think now would be a good time for me to get back in good graces and introduce Hollywood to you. And John knows all about her, and I do too. So, John, would you let us know?
Sure, after, after a few month process that we went through, we have hired Hollywood Woods as our new business manager besides Steve Char, personally at Town Hall. She was our sexual H. R. person for a day and week permanent consulting firm. So she's actually going to be taking over that job. She has over twenty years of experience in H. R. She's worked for, at home accounting. She's with the H. R. manager. She's worked at private sector out there, the consulting firm. So she started on Monday, and we're real happy to have her. And all the department heads are still going to work there. And she's saying, I'm going to do the trustees. She directs, you report directly to the board of trustees. So welcome to the board.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead with the zoning, zoning and economic.
Thank you. So I just have the one item on today. It's Pride One Apartment Homes on Town Square Drive. It's the T. F. that was approved by the school on June thirtieth. And Mark Adetti was at our last meeting to answer any questions and go over the T. F. And we have Pride One here today as well. So I just need trustee approval on the T. F.
Do they hold a, do they hold a special meeting?
They did, on the thirtieth.
So instead of just using the fourteen day, you know, we actually have to. I think that's what we're hoping to have instead of just using fourteen days.
Well, I have a three page letter here from the subject department, and it lists activities and things that have been going on. So for you just to come up with one, thank you very much.
Yeah, just trying to streamline that.
Busy place over there.
So that's going to need a resolution, and it's going to be where this.
Got me reading.
Well, actually, that's not.
That's their resolution.
We're going to approve the, who's the name of the T. F.? What's the name?
That's for Pride One.
Pride One. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Pride One T. F. as presented.
I'll second for discussion.
Go ahead.
Just for the public's understanding, the T. F., this is going to keep the school district whole, correct? They're going to.
Yes, that's correct.
So the school district will remain whole on their tax, and this township is also going to get the five percent that typically we don't get on the T. F.s.
And then we're getting paving on Town Square Drive sidewalks, Town Square East, as well as lighting. I can read this resolution if you like, just the top of it. It's a resolution declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property to be public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefits such parcels, exempting such improvements from real estate property taxation, requiring the owners of improvements on such parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes and establish them at Town Square Drive Public Improvement Tax Increment Equivalent Fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to the Ohio Rice Code Sections five oh, five seven oh nine point seven three, five seven oh nine point seven four, and five seven oh nine point seven five.
In sidewalks, one side of the road?
One side of the road, yeah. And I believe you guys asked for it to be on the side with the sacrif. Will I say?
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second for discussion. We're ready for the vote.
All those favor, suit?
Yes.
Next.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Dave, are we ready?
Oh, I think so. Just a couple of FYI's at first. We're still working on a hundred rich sign, working it in here and there, down through there. Hopefully, have it completed today or sometime tomorrow. It's just we're putting pieces here and there, so.
I drove by. It's looking really nice. When you clean that out, just with those couple of little plants and trees, I think they're cleaned up really.
Well, it, it's really a lot of nice roses there, so. But today, we're going to try to set the post with concrete. So we might have to let the sign part go for another day until, you know, the concrete hardens, so.
But we'll say they called, they were very, I heard them a couple of residents back there. They're very happy. They said it looked really good.
We'll do it for a year. Just also let the board know, last meeting, we had a concern about Sherman Road Bridge. I did contact O. G. A. N. They're going to look into Sherman Road Bridge. And I also kind of mentioned again, Sandy Lake Road Bridge, to maybe mill them off like they did before to get rid of the bump, just on that thing. Also, there was a hiccup on the three way stop sign. One of the, one of the readers broke for traffic going through there, so they have to redo it again. So it's getting done, it's just, they had a failure on one of their meters. So it didn't register. They figured it didn't register half, even a third of the cars. So something went wrong, so. Okay, now we're getting into fun stuff. Now, I'd like to have the board accept the proposal for the chip and seal job for Giaga Highway Company from the recommendation from the county to proceed with the project for three hundred and six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll make the motion to accept the bid proposal from Giaga Highway.
Second.
Three hundred and six, one hundred and fifty cents.
Yes.
So this is going to be, are we doing the alternate as part of this also?
Yes, the alternate will be included in this too. So we're going to, go ahead and move forward with everything we had on the paper.
So How Road from Townege, city limits to State Route forty-three, Sunny Brook from Monghore to Kent City Limits, and then the Oakwood Estates.
Yes, and that'll be a leveling course with a chip and seal on top.
Thank you. Any questions? All those favor, suit?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the second thing I, it's just like, I don't know if you have to accept this or it's the county, they sent over phase three of Cranberry Creek. They're getting ready to prepare it to put in front of the board of commissioners for us to accept the subdivision there. Here's, I mean, a letter to let them know that we did get the letter and stuff. Uh, here's, I mean, a letter to let them know that we did get the letter and stuff, and here's a map on there, it shows you the phase. So, I mean, we've already accepted phase one and two. Uh, phase four will probably have by this fall, I mean, that's how close it's about done over there, so there's really not that much more truck traffic or any, you know, just a few odds, and it's not like fifty more cement trucks are gonna be run through there and all that stuff, so. And I went through and looked at the things they fixed up to and everything, after the county had things fixed up, curb gutters, and everything looks real well, real good in there.
Do you have any concerns of any of the phase three roads before we, because this is our opportunity, not that we can really stop it, but this is our opportunity to tell the Commissioners, hey, wait, we're calling up.
Well, and that's, and that's what's nice, we, I have a real good rapport with, uh, Mike Collins and Larry Jenkins, and some of the concerns like in phase one and two I brought up, they got them fixed, you know, so, and this, this time around, it's not really how do you say, it, they didn't have as much traffic damage to this road as they did, like, phase one and two, because of course, everything came through phase one and two to get three and four. So, no, actually, it's in pretty good shape, so, I mean, if, here's the letter, if you guys wanna sign it, uh, plus the map on there if you wanna see. As you see, the, the yellow marking shows the phase three, then the one last little bit off there to a cul-de-sac is considered phase four. Okay, so there's not really that much more after that. It will be accepting another point three, three, five miles.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the letter from the County Engineers Office of the potential acceptance of phase three.
I'll second that.
All those who favor, suit?
Yes.
Yes.
Then we can sign this now.
Yeah, I'll take that back with me when I take back paperwork for this, and, uh, so, uh, and the third thing, uh, it's, I really don't like to do this one, but, uh, Cody Koffel has turned in his resignation letter for two weeks, he will be leaving us after almost nine years of service to go work for a, a different company, so I just want him, uh, I don't know how that all works, here's his resignation letter, if you wanna see it.
I would like to make a motion that we accept Cody's resignation from being with us, and I thank him for the nine years, and he's really done, done a good, good deed for us, being here, very knowledgeable.
I'll second that, acceptance of the resignation letter, and thank, um, Cody for all his work, he's been a great asset to the township and movement. All those who favor, suit?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's my report. Quick question, Dave, for you, um, Harrowood Lane, is, when are they gonna open that up to cut through? That will not be opened up, you're, you're talking about to get into Hickory Creek?
Yeah.
We will not open that up until the building's done over that way.
Till all the houses are done?
Yes, because we don't, we don't want the construction traffic from Hickory Creek coming through the Sugar Maple Development, and destroying the roads that we just paved right before they started that.
Okay, I, it's a resident ass, so I was.
No, that, yeah, that's gonna be left shut down until pretty much, say, phase, I don't know if that's phase one or whatever gets dedicated to the township, probably.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Alright, let's go, we'll go into the Parks and Recs, Cassie.
Alright, um, I just have some informational items for the board today. Um, the first one is the, it is the National Recreation and Parks Association's, uh, Parks and Recreation Month, so I just wanna do a shout out, um, this year they're honoring all Parks and Recreation, full time, part time employees, volunteers, and anyone too that contributes to the success of Parks and Recreation Program, so that's all of you here, so thank you very much. Also, um, the next item is, uh, the part time positions, I spoke to Holly on Monday about, um, writing the descriptions for those, so we're working on those and hope to get those posted soon. Um, additionally, Erin, um, will be leaving a little bit later than she thought she was going to, so she'll actually be here until next Thursday, so she'll be extending, um, her employment just by a couple more days, so I thank her for doing that, giving me a little bit more time to get ready.
On that one, John, do we need a motion because we've accepted the resignation as a?
You know, we should, just because we did accept.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the amended resignation letter from Erin.
So, I'll second that.
What was the date of the?
Uh, the twenty, Thursday the twenty. Yeah.
All those who favor, suit?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, Brimfest updates, uh, we are looking at vendors and, uh, looking for more parade participants, also, I wanted to put that out there, if anybody would like to join the parade. Um, you can sign up on our website or contact us for a parade forum, um, and then, other than that, we're just doing the usual, um, getting the event map ready, going through logistics and all that stuff, contacting our entertainment, and, um, hard at work doing that. And then, past programs, um, unfortunately, due to the weather on Saturday, we had to postpone our Finding Nemo movie night, um, so we are looking at a rescheduled date for that and working with the movie company to find a date that works for them. Um, and then this Monday, we had our Fossils for Kids program here at the community center, um, and we had forty participants, so that was a really great program. That's always a hit. We found lots of fossils, if anybody wants to look for fossils in the park tonight later, I'll be here. And then upcoming programs, uh, next Saturday, I will be attending the Hill Church Back to School Bash, um, I'll be handing out rulers and having a, um, parks booth there, um, to give out some information. And then we, also on Saturday, we have the rescheduled American Steel Concert. And that is all.
Cassie, on the parks part time positions, and then we're taking the full time and splitting it into two jobs, and then you're gonna bring that back to the board before we post those.
Yeah, we can do that.
And then, what is our, where are we gonna put them, I guess it's my question.
So, actually, it's probably gonna be a little tight for a while, um, but I was thinking if that eight week timeline on the library works out, we can probably shift over there, if we're gonna have a parks room, and stay there in the interim, um, until the town hall's finished.
Okay.
Or at least, I mean, we could maybe even divide up, like, some people can work there, and some people can work at our office, so.
There also is one extra office in my office, my insurance agency, so that will be available someday, it's in the building there, uh.
I would be opposed to anybody in your insurance office, because then how do we handle, like, rent, utilities, internet, gas? I mean, I just think it creates that kinda cloudy conflict.
We got that.
We have space in the lobby also, where Holly used to sit up.
Yeah, because we have another employee that we're gonna be hiring as well, so there'll be three more, three more bodies to deal with.
Right.
You can't get two in your office.
Well, and then I'm also gonna have an intern too, so.
So we have four more bodies to deal with.
Yeah, we have, we have this space here also, so we can, we can make it work until.
Maybe transition parks down here.
You need to use that office up there?
Yeah.
And that ain't what we put up there and all that?
It, it is.
I think it already is.
Because they got a meeting right there.
We already have a printer up there too.
You got what?
We have a printer up there also.
So maybe if we move your sack down here, at least three of you could easily fit.
Yeah.
Use the conference room.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about locations, because I knew we had a secondary company too, and where we're gonna put them at.
And I've thought about it, and if absolutely necessary, we could probably fit in my office, if we did kinda like a horseshoe shape, I mean, the way Erin and I are already, our desks are kind of combined, so adding another desk, I mean, could be done, so.
Right.
We'll just figure out, so maybe, we could add one more body, but that's a good idea, because we.
All our stuff's here anyway.
Because Holly's in Rochelle's office, so that's her office, so we move to the new building, right?
Right, because we had it in first building, we're gonna need somewhere to sit.
Could we put them in that front lobby, could we be pretty, that big conference table, and just put a desk out there, and just smaller? Yeah.
Well, I'm glad we have a lot of different options to look at and study on and see which, which would fit the best.
I just wanna make sure, as we hire, before we go out to hire, that places to actually put people, for the construction stuff.
I have a lot of places, we just got.
Okay, good, I think that's all under control. Let's go ahead with, um, uh, information technology.
Um, I just, again, have information for the board, uh, just wanna let you know how the, it did wireless rollout went, um, it went fairly smoothly, um, thanks to Captain Atkinselph with the police department. Um, the only hiccup that we ran into was with two of the police, uh, cars, um, their in-car video system, uh, only on two of them did not accept the new AT&T service. Um, it took me several days of working with the company that produces those, G-Tech, uh, to find the solution, we found with the resolution, uh, yesterday morning, and got car twelve working. Uh, car eleven, which is our K-nine unit, is the only non-working one, and he was off yesterday, uh, he'll be in, it's a matter of time, he'll be in this afternoon, and I'll get that car working, so after this afternoon, we'll have all of the township stuff rolled out, um, and I just have three cell phones that are left, um, Mike Constancey, who's been out, um, I've not moved him over, uh, uh, Kaylee is coming in tomorrow afternoon, and, did, 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 who's the other one? Oh, haha, sorry, um, uh, Chief Malali, um, I still have to get with, uh, to get him moved over also. And then once that's done, he will be completely off, right somewhere else.
Thanks, you've been busy. Thank you, much for your input, yes, very busy. Good things are happening for us. Um, I don't have any, um, comments about the cemetery, because it's very quiet over there.
What's that, FYI?
Oh, you've been in FYI?
Yeah, we, uh, the county said over there, uh, with the issue with the acquisition of the additional cemetery grounds, that the, the prior owner, the current owner wanted to have access to get a road there, if they wanted to put it, you know, property, I had to go back to the county, the county sent over their, um, approval of what it would be, so I think it was in the final stages of that, now they have to, Martin Davis, who will be the, uh, owner, make sure that's all proven.
Is your feeling well? Very good.
It's in the final stages.
Okay, that's great. And, let's see, we have fiscal, you don't have anything. So, is there anything else to come forward before we make a motion to go into executive session?
John, would you wanna, do we just wanna wait for the whole board to have a discussion about how we're gonna do meetings, going forward, is, we start to build this out?
Yeah.
You think that's, are you?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to have some input, but I just think we all need to put our thinking cap on, because this is gonna be.
We're getting too large in here.
Yeah, well, when we go into the new meeting, if it wasn't designed for this, we're gonna be short at least two seats at the front, so.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, um, we. We have a motion for executive session on this date, July the twelfth, twenty-three. Nicole, I moved to convene to the executive session. Got the meeting. Okay. Put my name down there, convene the, I made the motion, um, for considering, considering the following men, matters of employment. And, um, let's see, anyway, and that's it.
Second, if I, if I may.
Yeah, the next, the second, yeah.
All those who favor, suit?
Yes.
Yes.
Here, during the executive session, eight, seven, seven. Just to create.
Yes, just. Yes, just.
There we go.